Good evening, welcome to the March Board Meeting of the Lake Mills Area School District. I'm Rick Mason, the President of the Board, and we have a full house that you probably can't see on TV, but welcome everybody here, we're going to hear a little bit more about what's going on. And our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Verification meeting notice.
The agenda was submitted to the Lake Mills Leader on March 1st and posted at the library, the post office, and the bank at Lake Mills, and it was also placed on the district website. We reposted on March 7th, once we had the fire suppression and turf bids to add to the agenda.
Okay. Could we rise and do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to call the meeting to order, could we have roll call please?
Don Delaney?
Here.
Rachel Davies?
Here.
Robert D'Imperio?
Here.
David Rado?
Here.
Richard Mason?
Here. Any agenda revisions? Could we have approval please?
Move approval of the agenda as printed.
Second.
Moved in second and approved the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that carries. Administrative reports, Mr. Vogel is sick today, and we have a competent replacement.
Thank you.
Mrs. Strake?
I'd like to introduce Cindy Sandberg, she is our Jefferson County Schools Career Coordinator, and she will kick off the meeting this evening and share with us why all these people are here.
She's heading for, she's heading on that side.
Nope, the mic.
Right around there.
You can move it wherever, maybe?
No, sorry, can't.
Okay, thank you for having us tonight. As Pam said, we are the Jefferson County Schools Career, but also for your district, I'm also your Career and Technical Education person. And one of the things that Pam asked me to inform the school board of is something that I've not seen in many, many years in our consortium. And this was with our Carl Perkins Grant. And our Carl Perkins Grant has several indicators that are federal core indicators, such as that we have the senior concentrators that get advanced in profession on the language arts and the math parts, that they get this technical skill attainment, that they get the checklists and the diplomas and that, and that they graduate. And also that they are, we serve non-traditional, that's women in ag, women in tech ed, this kind of gender in all of our courses. This district, for the past three years, has gotten yes on every federal core indicator for the Carl Perkins Grant. This is unbelievable. I have not seen this at any of the other districts that I serve, and I serve 10 different districts in Jefferson County. So I say congratulations to your district. This attests to the quality of your Schools Career Program, your CTE department, and the support of the administration and your school board for these kinds of opportunities for the students. And I think this can be shown in what we have here tonight. We are here to take and honor our youth apprenticeship students. These are students that have been in classes and in positions that are aligned with their career area. I'd like to thank from the district, Colby Showmaker, who is our YA Coordinator here, Jennifer Iverson, who does our finance, our business, and our marketing programs, Kevin O'Brien, who does our construction, our manufacturing, and Luke Wadenfeld, who does our agriculture. So tonight, I'd like to take, and when I call these students' names, if they come up here with their employer, first off is Carly Strauss, with Straussdale Holstens, with Bruce Strauss. For you Carly? Next we have Tyler Smith, with S&amp;E Carpentry, with William Smith. Is Tyler here tonight? Okay. Next we have Casey Drania, American Family Insurance, with Tyler Speth. And we have a very familiar employer. It's so great when we have employers that keep hiring our students and giving them the opportunities. And the first one we have is Donovan Malatki, from AKT Business Service, Vicki and Bill Ritchie. And Donovan also received, was a winner in one of the contests this year. Jennifer, would you like to say a little bit more about Donovan?
Sure. Also Donovan Malatki and Casey Drania competed up in Madison, actually, at American Family Insurance, and they competed in a business challenge, and they took first place, and they're going to state in May, so. And I think they each received, was it $500?
Yes.
Scholarship, yes. So they got scholarship money for college, and they get to go and compete for more money.
Next one we have is another employer that has done a lot for our youth apprenticeship. We have Katie Popolowski, from Chapter 2, with Amanda Johnson. And we also have to thank Chapter 2, we have an information technology student there. And information technology is a very hard place to get students, to give them the experience on what it is like to work in that realm, and yet all of us are going to depend upon it as we keep going down the road. Elliot Virtue was at Chapter 2, with Kyle Johnston. Next student we have is Kennedy Fiffen, she's at Genesis National Swimpool Foundation, with Katie Wilk Junkers. Next we have Dylan Brash, who has been at JMEC, with Jim Melker. And another one of our manufacturing students was Harley Jones, at Country Campers, with And lastly, we have Stam Stefan, a manufacturing student, again, at Chapter 2, with Andrea Thank you to all our students, our parents, our employers, this program could not operate without you, and this has been a phenomenal year in our county. When we write our youth apprenticeship grant that helps fund this program, we put in for 155 students. I thought, mm, maybe, because we've never seemed to get over 125, 135. At the rate we're going, by the end of this month, we will probably be at 190 students. This is phenomenal for our county, and it's thanks to all of our employers, the students, our school districts, and you as a school board, for giving the students this opportunity, and again, for your community supporting this to our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And round of applause for everybody.
And the rest of Mr. Vogel's report?
As Dr. Mason said, Mr. Vogel couldn't be here, so I'm just reading from his notes. It's a very busy time at LMHS, I wanted to share numerous non-athletic achievements that have happened in the last several weeks. The LMHS Battle of Books team competed at the state level and got fifth place, that's the highest of any high school team here at Lake Mills. The Lake Mills High School Varsity Math Team took fifth place at the conference, and JV won that meet. The entire Lake Mills High School Forensics Team has qualified for state, and they'll be traveling there on April 12th. They will be performing at Waterhouse this Thursday, March 14th, if anyone wants to hear any of their entries. Solo ensemble, we have 32 vocal, seven-string, and five-band events going to state at the end of April. That's really incredibly as well, incredible as well. Visual Arts Classic, VAC, participants competed last Friday at UW Whitewater. All 11 team members scored at least a second place in either the long-term or onsite events, and 16 members scored first place and will be going on to state. The state competition will be at UW Madison on April 12th. And then some upcoming events that I wanted to mention, the Band Orchestra and Choir Concert is tomorrow night. NHS will be doing their blood drive this Thursday, the 14th, and that happens throughout the day here at the high school. The FFA banquet is Thursday night, that's always a really well-attended, exciting event. And during our parent-teacher conferences in April, the Lake Mills High School will be providing a presentation about social media and the internet in the auditorium. Topics will include digital citizenship and cyber safety.
Very good, thank you. Mrs. Bauer, Middle School Principal.
VAC.
VAC is Visual Arts Classic.
Okay, good evening. I just wanted to, I've been kind of reviewing my goals for the year, and just wanted to kind of tell you a couple of things that we'll be doing, wrapping up the end of the year. So, at the beginning of the year, I talked a little bit about instructional excellence, our building community, and our social-emotional learning. We are working on selecting our core communities for next year before the end of this year, really working on some programs for transitioning 4th to 5th grade. We have, we missed our February 22nd in-service, so we are continuing though after-school meetings, a book study on restorative practices. We have, we had in the fall, I think you remember, we have all our middle schoolers go out and do a community service project, they'll do that in the spring, but again, with the service learning component of, are you completing the loop with understanding how you're helping the community, are you active in that? Our core communities will be designing that this time around, and students will be reflecting on the first time they did a survey, now this time they'll actually be doing some writing to reflect on that community service project. Around teaching excellence, we still have our learning goals to finish up, and at the beginning of the year, I also talked about some standard operating procedures that we were working on, those will be wrapping up as well. We have been working and talking all year about how we're moving forward with technology at the middle school, needing to define right now our belief about digital health and how that drives how we use technology at the middle school. And then finally, around my parent piece, me and the teachers did a bunch of parent forums, I'm meeting with parents to get their feedback on the format of those, and kind of what they thought the publishing of that has been kind of subdued until I get that feedback. So we will be doing that though before the end of the year, so those will be available for parents as well. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
All right. Yep.
Mrs. Thompson, Elementary School Principal is ill also, so Mrs. Strake?
So I'll read you her report. First of all, about parent-teacher conferences, thank you to all the parents who attended our spring parent-teacher conferences. Together, our parents and teachers were able to help our students reach their learning goals as we looked toward the end of the school year. Four-year-old kindergarten roundup, Friday, we hosted our first session of the 4K Roundup. Parents were able to hear about the 4K program, learn tips for building the foundation for early literacy skills, and some resources for strong parenting strategies. Students with our 4K and early childhood team played games with toys, they listened to some read-alouds, and they interacted with new friends. We'll have another session tomorrow night, and I know that there's another 50 kids coming tomorrow night for that. Playworks, last week, I, Mrs. Thompson, had the opportunity to learn about Playworks. This is an organization that provides support to schools to build a vibrant recess environment for all students. They will be coming to observe a recess in progress this spring, and together we'll decide about next steps for this year, or, excuse me, for next year. And I just wanted to add, we will get some support from that, from the foundation in Watertown, and they have agreed to talk with us about the middle school in 5th grade as well, so we might be able to tag that on too. They seemed excited to venture into the middle school area as well. And then finally, before and after-school care, we had an overwhelming response to the survey regarding before and after-school care. Mr. Dayton, Ms. Fund, and I continue to work together to solidify plans to offer before and after-school care for the 2019-20 school year. Mr. Dayton and I will provide information for the school board at the April meeting.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown, who's the Special Education Director, and she is also ill.
No, she's not. She's at a-
She's gone.
She's with her family this evening.
But, you're going to read her report.
I'll read that as well. This is really exciting. Over the last two months, the school staff and Oregon Mental Health Services have met to develop a relationship between our two entities. We are excited to be able to partner with Oregon Mental Health Services to provide access for students and families to in-school counseling. This counseling would be funded through the family's insurance and is meant to provide access for families who might struggle to arrange these appointments outside the school day. So we've put the brochure, the draft of the brochure at your places. Today, we met our staff and Oregon Mental Health to discuss referrals and next steps, and we're ready to begin. We've had, we've created a memorandum of understanding, it's been reviewed by our lawyers and by our insurance company, so that's all taken care of. Although it's a partnership, it is also an independent practice, so no money will be exchanged between the school and Oregon Mental Health. Mondays will be designated as the day that a therapist will be here in the district, he will be serving all three schools. Regular meetings and resources will be shared between the therapists and the school teams. The therapy provided by Oregon Mental Health is solution-focused therapy, that's the model that they use, and they work closely with county and private services. We're all very excited to provide yet another additional resource to our families and students. And again, if you have any questions, you can contact me or contact Melissa, this is a really exciting new project that we're able to launch immediately.
Good, thank you. Mrs. Sivrude, who's the Learning and Student Services Director?
Hi. So, first thing I want to mention is that summer school signup is going on right now, it closes Thursday online, so anybody who's interested in summer school classes should get signed up like right away. We have about 10 of our classes filled to capacity right like by 5:20 on Thursday night when it opened at 5 o'clock. So, we always have a couple really popular ones, and they remain really popular. Bowling, we could use another bowling alley. The next thing is that Forward Exam is starting next week, and our 10th graders will start. Letters went home today to parents via Sky, Skyward, some messenger. I don't know what I used. Andrea helps me. So I get it out to the parents about that and the schedule that's being used for that. And then on your board docs, you have link, or you have PDFs of all of the Every Student Succeeds Act reports. And what these are, is with the 2017 reauthorization of the ESSA Act, the federal government requires report cards for every school district in the country, basically, I believe. And you might want to say, well, we already have state report cards, they don't meet all the requirements of the ESSA Act, so now we have ESSA reports that also are report cards for the district, but they look very, very different. It's more data-focused. And the only thing I really want to call your attention to is the fact that they came up with three designations. You can either be a school in comprehensive support, meaning you need support in many areas, targeted support, or not identified. Every single one of our buildings this year was not identified, meaning that we are on, we meet the threshold for everything. And this is really good news. This is work that we've been doing to close the achievement gaps has really paid off in this report. But this also means that our elementary school is no longer considered a focus school, which also means that we are losing that focus grant, because that was a targeted support type of identification through the last, I think that was done like six years ago. And then, so now this is their new way, and they're not doing target, they're not doing focus schools anymore, they're not doing that kind of thing, but they're doing these ESSA identifications this way. So, kudos to our staff for getting us not identified, we'll miss a little bit of the money, but that's okay. Our data is looking very, very good, and it's very nice to see that in paper form. If you have any questions, these reports are very lengthy, but if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, and I can sit down with anybody.
Questions, anybody? Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Brockert, Director of Business Services.
Just a quick update, at the last board meeting, we shared and accepted the bids for our bond sale, and so the last week or two, I've been working with a financial advisor in investing those funds. The closing took place last week, and so everything's on target with going forward with all our referendum projects, the financing of it, so I was very pleased, everything went smoothly.
That's it, thank you. Mrs. Strake, District Administrator.
We had our makeup day for minutes lost on February 22nd, that had been a staff development day, that we switched to a student contact day, so at this time, we are meeting all the minimum requirements for minutes in all of our buildings. I also wanted to remind you that April 2nd is the spring election, and we have two seats to fill here on the board. Once that election happens, we'll have a reorganization meeting on April 29th at 6:00 PM. I just want to check, make sure that time is okay with everyone.
I will not be able to be there.
Okay.
But you guys will do a good job.
So if you want to, we'll have to swear you in at another time.
I'm fine not being there.
We'll have to swear you in at another time.
You're going to swear at me later?
If you should, with your license.
Bad too.
Okay. And at that meeting, we will swear in the new members and complete the organizational tasks that we do each year. This afternoon, we received word that our high school fan section received a WBCA Coaches Association Sportsmanship Award, so congratulations to all the students at Lake Mills High School for, and actually, middle school and elementary school students contributed to that as well, so congratulations. And then I've also attached the Recreation Department report, goes through how many people are participating in all the sports, you can see really large numbers. Gymnastics and tumbling right now has 108 kids, that's crazy, with tiny tumblers, another 32 there. And believe it or not, it's time to start spring soccer, so I'll, that signup, we have 144 kids signed up for that already. And then I also wanted to mention that the success of the ski and snowboard club, they had 174 participants, those might be duplicated between the season, but that's a really great opportunity for our middle school and high school kids to get out and do some fun activities on a Friday night. And then also, you can see the numbers there for the signups for softball and baseball and T-ball, so they are very, very active in the rec department.
Very good. Questions, anybody? Okay, thank you. Board reports, Mr. Buckholz, the Student Representative.
So with a little bit of what's happening at the high school, is winter sports are just wrapped up, so spring sports are now in full swing. Track and field began their indoor practices, and I've talked to a couple runners and jumpers and throwers, and they're all very excited to get outside when all the snow melts. With music, our tri-AM organization, so it's currently Music in Our Schools Month, so every week a music group in our school performs at lunch, as well as music playing people out of the school on Mondays and Fridays. And then the show choir is on their New York tour next week, so that's, the show choir and all other senior music students that signed up are headed to New York to perform on Liberty Island, as well as the United Nations. And that is what I have that hasn't already been said.
Sorry.
It's okay.
All right, thank you.
It's not a competition.
Dr. Delaney, Correspondence.
We received three thank you notes this month, the first from the family of Karen Tway for the flower arrangement, a second from the Arts Alliance for the use of the elementary school for hosting the Super Bowl, and third from Sue Haviland, a thank you in regard to her retirement.
Okay, thank you. Mr. D'Imperio, Facility Committee.
Well, the Facilities Group has been very busy over the last week or so, and one of the things that has occurred during the design process, we're at a point now which is called design development. And these are much more detailed drawings and specifications than were available to us when we met in March. The committee approved these documents, and the construction manager and architect are now moving to get into the bidding phase. We expect the bidding for the entire project to begin sometime near the end of March, and bids should be received mid to late April. The anticipation is that the start of construction for the building addition will be in the middle of May, and the start of construction for the athletic component will begin as soon as the track is available to the contractors, taking into account any events that may occur later in the, later in the spring. So I'd like to just point out a few things in this drawing, it's essentially the same. As I noted back in March, the building addition is, at this point, going to the west, and that addition primarily has the new LMC collaborative area, two classrooms on both sides, new restroom on both ends, as well as a unisex restroom there. Then into this area where we currently are, will be another component of the library for instruction, this will be a large group instruction, it can be computer, we can actually utilize it for a board meeting, which would be pretty cool, not that this isn't great, but that would be, that would be an upgrade, I think, for us. And then we're going to develop several business classrooms, offices, the teacher's lounge will stay the same, and upgrading of the restrooms. The other component of the project is in the lower level of the high school, and again, this is primarily for technical and career education. The whole motivation was to try to create a suite for those activities, and so we have the Small Engines and Construction Lab, an enhanced computer lab, which can, which is also called the Maker Space, I had to ask what that meant, but at any rate, relocated fitness center, and then the food science and ag are being clustered together to provide relationships between both activities in remodel space. And then, the addition from the street out on Caitlin will look like this, pretty much like we thought before, it follows the rhythm of this wing of the building with complementary materials. And one of the things that we noticed was that we've done some bidding, the bids have come in favorably, but we're very tight on our budget, and so we've adapted some alternatives during the bidding to make sure that we stay in within the budget. We have to, because there is no way that we can exceed the budget, given the referendum. Next is the athletic field, we didn't have a chance to have any documents for that. This is a, this is a very detailed drawing of it. The athletic field located here will be lined for both use in football and soccer, a new eight-lane track, this area will be the bleacher area, expansion of the concession stand to accommodate additional restrooms, a storage building, and then this area here will be utilized for the field events for the track. So, again, this one, again, the bids have come in favorably, as often happens, you get pluses and minuses, so we're hopeful that we have good activity on the bidding, and we can continue in a positive way. And then finally, just, this is what the field will look like, and one of the things that's later on the agenda is the approval of the turf bids, and so that'll, using the logo as well as the school colors, this area is going to have a different surface on it, and that's going to be used for the high jump area, so that's what we have.
Fantastic. Any questions at all, on board?
When is the first season that they hope to have football games here?
2012, 2012. Football would be 2020, it would be ready for spring of 19 for girls' soccer. It would be ready for spring of 19 for girls soccer if they would choose to use it and the tray, and track. Is it 2020? Spring of 2020.
Oh, I was going to say, okay.
2000, spring of 2020. So with the, never mind. Answer my own question. Forget it.
All right. Any other questions at all? Going back to the rendering of the building from the outside, it's not going to be green. Just so everybody knows that, that, that's not, it won't be green.
I think it's just a screen.
No, I don't know what-
It'll go down, too, right? Is that what I was seeing? Or no? Like, is, are there two levels then, or just the one? Okay.
What? All right. Anything else?
I would say just to kind of orient yourself, where we're sitting right now will be a hallway.
Mm-hmm.
All right. All right, we're going to talk a little bit about the consent agenda.
No, we have community input.
Oh, we, a community input? Do we have any community input? We do. Okay.
Ms. Morris?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I almost skipped you.
You almost skipped me. That's okay. I mean, the room is so empty at this point. Okay. Okay. Governor Tony Evers recently unveiled his proposed biennial budget, which includes a number of provisions that would support the effective function of Wisconsin's public schools. Some of these proposals include returning the state to two-thirds funding of public schools and increasing funding for special education, mental health, English language learners, and much more. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards has released a statement in support of this budget, and a number of school administrators also support it, quoted on Wisconsin Public Radio, such as Mark Bezek, Superintendent of the Somerset School District, and Executive Committee Member of the National School Superintendent's Association, and Eau Claire School Superintendent Mary Ann Hardbeck. Furthermore, the proposed budget is in agreement with the recommendations of the bipartisan Blue Ribbon Commission on School Funding. So the Lake Mills Education Association and Lake Mills Education Support Professional Association would like to encourage everyone to become informed on the contents of this budget and contact their legislators to express their support. It is also helpful to contact the members of the Joint Finance Committee to submit testimony on the budget. For more information, you can visit Wisconsin Public Education Network's Budget HQ website for details of the budget, contact information for the Joint Finance Committee, and tips on how to write your testimony. And their website is www.wisconsinnetwork.org/blog/budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll talk a little bit about the consent agenda. Last, last month, we went to a consent agenda, and a number of items are included in there. And I want to read those off to you so you know what's included in the consent agenda. So this month's consent agenda includes approval of the following. February 11th, regular meeting and executive session meetings, minutes. February's finance committee proceedings. Vouchers and invoices and treasurer's report. The retirement of Ms. Kate Hero, who's a custodian. The resignations of Special Education Perry Educator Elizabeth Dre. Middle school track coaches Tammy Lambert and Sean Bowleg. Assistant varsity football coaches Steve Murphy and Larry Reddum. Support staff letter of assignment for Teresa Mullin as food service worker, and letters of assignment for Kendall, Kendall Hino-
Hinohs.
Hinohs. JV volleyball coach Adam Hosey. JV baseball coach Nick Dunkleberg and Greg Baines as middle school track and field coaches. So having, those are the contents of, of the consent agenda. At this point, if anybody wants to pull something out of there to talk about it or get some further information, now's the time to do that. Okay, seen none. I'll propose the motion. I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Could we have roll call on that, please?
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Now we go to the action items, which is approval of early college credits.
So we have three students this evening that have requested early college credit for first semester next year. And I wanted to remind you that often students request more courses than they end up taking. And as documentation of that, I included, excuse me, Megan, included the last semester's list of courses and how they actually transpired.
So take a motion?
I move the board approve the early college credit courses, course requests for the first semester of the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the early college credit courses. Any discussion, comments? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of asbestos abatement bid.
We received three bids for the asbestos removal here at the high school in conjunction with the referendum project. The bids, the bids range from 22,620 to 37,950, and we are recommending the lowest bid.
I move the board approve the asbestos abatement contract to Robinson Brothers Environmental of Wanaquie, in the amount of $22,620 for asbestos removal work at the high school.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the asbestos abatement contract. Holy cow, that's a mouthful. Any questions, comments on that? All right. That has to be done prior to the work, that, the new construction, so hopefully we're not going to run into any, anything, you know, really, a lot of it. It shouldn't, it, we don't think so, but you never know. Roll call, please.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of fire suppression bid.
We received seven bids for this, and this, again, is to add a sprinkler system to the entire high school over the course of two summers. This is required whenever you do a renovation to a building like we're doing at this point. The bids range from $378,277 to $865,700, and we are recommending the lowest bid to you.
I might add that that will take place over two, two years.
Two summers.
Two summers. Motion, please.
I'll move the board approve the fire suppression contract to Automatic Fire Systems of Rockford, Illinois, in the amount of $378,227 for the fire suppression work at the high school.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the fire suppression contract. Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
David Radel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of turf bid.
We received seven bids for turf, and we held interviews of the, with four of those companies. And the facilities committee has learned more about turf than we ever thought possible. We spent a whole day talking about turf. We're recommending to you, which monetarily might look like the second lowest bid, but in actuality, they have upgraded the product from 42 ounces per square yard to 46 ounces per square yard at no additional cost, and increased the warranty from eight years to 10 years. So it is actually financially a much better deal and, and could actually be considered a low bid.
Okay, motion, please.
I move the board approve the turf contract with ACT Global Americas, Inc., located in Austin, Texas, in the amount of $329,565 for the high school multipurpose outdoor facility project.
Second. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions on that? It's an interesting process. Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff resignation.
We have one resignation for the 2019-20 school year with Ms., from Mr. Brad Doherty at the elementary school.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the professional staff resignation of Mr. Brad Doherty at the end of the 2018-19 school year, and thank him for his service to the students of Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve professional staff resignation. Any comments or questions on that? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. And finally, approval of gifts.
Last month, we had this part of, as part of the consent agenda, and it was asked to be brought out as an action item. So one of the items was approved last month, but we included it again, and there's quite a list, so I'll let you read those off.
I move the board accept the following gifts and thank the generous donors for their continued support of the students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. Paul Klein and Angela Hobbs donation of $100 to the Family Connections Fund. Dave and Inger Radl's donation of $100 to the Family Connections Fund. Steve and Laili Wilkie's donation of $100 to the Family Connections Fund. Ken Stuttonson's donation of $100 to the Family Connections Fund. Michael Mano's donation of $200 to the Family Connections Fund. Sue and Frank Whittle's donation of $200 to the High School Drama Department. Teresa Grimes donation of $200 to the seventh grade field trip account. Optimus donation of $108 to the Family Connections Fund. And an anonymous donation of $1,000 to the girls soccer program.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve all of our generous gifts this month.
Wow.
Wow, that's right. Any other questions?
I do have one.
Yes.
What is the Family Connections Fund?
In the past, we had a separate fund at each of the schools that was money donated by people for things like field trips, or if any students needed different kinds of items. This year, when we partnered with United Way and staff members, or really anyone in the community who wanted to donate to the schools, once we set, set up that program, we put those all into one pot called the Family Connections Fund. And so any student in the entire district, if there is a need, someone on their behalf can request funds from that larger pool, which comes through United Way donations, or as you saw, all of those donations this month. They're available to students for a wide variety of needs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperio?
Aye.
David Radel?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Future board agenda items.
Okay, there, the agenda is filling up for April already. You'll hear the curriculum report from the Social Studies Department. We will have the 4K, four-year-old kindergarten contract for renewal. You'll be seeing the 2020 Spanish trip proposed by our new Spanish teacher to go to Panama. We have worked with the facilities committee to update the long-range facilities plan, so we'd like to bring that forward for approval. And you'll hear the report from the Recreation Department about the proposed before and after childcare program for 2019 and '20. We were going to honor a board member for longevity and service to the community. We'll have to see about that. And then we will also have the approval of initial summer school staff contracts.
Okay. Anything else that anybody can think of? Motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, we are adjourned.